Madam Chairman, we're left.
Good morning and welcome to our July sixteenth meeting. This is a Wednesday, our first Wednesday meeting, so we all think it's Monday, but welcome to Wednesday. First up on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The prosecuting attorney was M. and stated that they did not put a recent conversation with Department of Agriculture on milfoil. But Brian is left, so maybe he didn't want to add it today?
I think that's something that probably should be advertised.
Okay, yeah, okay. Well, we'll go ahead then and recap him, yeah, put it on for next week. So, did everybody look at the agenda then? Is there any modifications?
It would move that we approve the agenda for Wednesday, July sixteenth, as written.
Seconded.
It's been moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Rita, you're up next with bills. Thank you for the information I requested. I'm sorry, I just didn't quite look at all of the documents to make sure that that signed form was there, so I appreciate you answering. Anybody have any questions on the bills?
I looked it over and everything looked good to me. Don't have any questions.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'd like a motion that we approve the claim of board orders and there were no junior college, so.
It's been moved in seconded, all in favor? Aye. Are you harvesting your garden like crazy?
Not yet.
No?
No, blueberries start this weekend.
Ah.
You think you set on?
No, I think I've got seven tomatoes so far. Lots of peas. I have a few, but they're in my greenhouse. And I got all of my radishes. They're all done.
Radishes are great.
They're so fast. I had a dream last night about when I retire and putting up fencing around all of my stuff and how I was gonna do it. I was going, okay.
Don't have to worry about that.
Oh, nice. At least we have a family group even.
I live with my parents.
Oh, nice. That might have been Mara's problem. That's a good thing.
We can send some cherry tomatoes.
I haven't written yet.
Haven't written yet?
No. I hope they're on.
Telling me I have to grow zone? There's no pressure.
Hey, my wife won't grow it this year. She said, nope. So, I'm begging. Always like going out there on the garden. It's like eating. Eating candy is so good.
I love the orange ones.
I do. Both of my cherries are orange. The sugar sun sweet, I think. I love those.
Actually, I have two little ones that I started from seed last year.
If I get enough ripe, I'll bring you some in.
Good grief.
I told you it's Mara's.
Is this Mara? Way to go, Mara.
That's a good thing. Taking down fire, which we have a number of fires started this year already. Good job, Mara.
I see why I don't have a stamp.
You'll be all right. I haven't do it twice in years.
Maybe just an X and a little X.
An X if that's the way you make your mark, you bitch.
Could just put my admission. That's what I do to all the supply houses. I just put in, pour some tea.
Good job.
Thank you, Rita.
All right, next up on our agenda, the building department. Annette is out today. And she just said they are busy. They're getting many more applications and lots and lots of inspections. So, Doug, that might answer our question on being able to meet budget.
Madam Chairman, we did notice that they are on a track to bring in the revenue that was projected of four hundred and twenty-five thousand. I can share with you right now if the commissioners are curious, as of today.
Awesome. It's a good thing.
We've collected three hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. We still have the months of July, August, September. So, I do think we will meet the projected estimated amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Nice.
We have ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars to collect, meet our projected amount, which I do in fact think we're gonna make that.
And how much we kind of average, it's probably different based on the month, just because right now we're so, it's our summertime, so it should be a lot higher. Okay, good news. Up next, court services, our Director Phillips.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, our office is extremely busy at the moment. I'm just exhausted as well, but um.
Not good news.
Yeah, we just got a lot going on, different things. We, uh, three of us were just at the Northwest Alcohol Conference. I help, uh, work at that conference as well as attend it, as well as speak at it. So, I've already worked probably thirty-plus hours so far this week, so if I seem extra tired, that's just why. Happy to do it. It's not a complaint. So, two of my officers got to go. It's a conference about all the trends and drugs and alcohol and all of the complexities that go into that, what we're seeing come up. Lots of conversation about, again, THC and how it's not, you know, grandma's THC anymore, grandpa's THC anymore. And polysubstance abuse. It's usually not just one thing. It's now several. And how to find that and how to monitor that. We definitely have clients who don't use the standard drugs or trendy kind of stuff like DXM, which is in cough medicine. So, we have clients who abuse cough medicine and how do you catch that, which we already have testing abilities to do that. So, it's just a wealth, as well as an overwhelming conversation and things to learn and how we can best to serve our community. Because we have our local population. We have that. We're here for that. But we would be naive if we did not prepare for them what is next, even though typically Valley County is a couple of years behind trends. The people that visit here are not behind the trends, so we need to be prepared for that. So, to have that consistent updated training is gonna always be important to any of us under law enforcement, so that we know what we're looking at when we're seeing it. Because, of course, people like to come up here and think that we are that lawlessness, podunk little town that doesn't know anything, when in fact, no, we do. And we're gonna keep working hard to build that muscle memory of information. A point I wanna make is, uh, also is that, so the Youth Advocacy Coalition also went and they sent a group of kids, as well as their chaperone. The chaperone spoke to me yesterday and there was, uh, it was, uh, it's unusual, but it was all Idaho groups that were there for kids. And the chaperone left saying, you know what, Valley County and what the Youth Advocacy Coalition, as well as just our community in general, is doing is, uh, like, steps ahead of everybody else. She was able to offer her expertise to folks around the state about connections, collaborations, funding supports, how to get kids involved. She's pretty proud of all of that with her group of, um, four kids that went with her. So, it made me very proud.
Who was it that went? Can I ask?
You may. It was Shannon McKnight.
Oh, okay.
Was the chaperone and then Patty went to Patty's, Jardina, uh, went to the bigger adult one. So, my words are, we got to show off and I'm really proud of them for what they do and what they bring to our communities and the supports that we have. But with that, still again, we'll lead me then to my next, is I still believe that Valley County is, um, an innovator of programming, of what we bring. So, I was invited a long time ago, but they never really, we didn't follow up because we got too busy and that would be with Ignite Idaho, Tracy Jameson and I. I am the Chair of the Anchor, which is the Assessment Center for Youth off of that. And there is a Assessment Center Symposium in Ohio next week. So, I'm going to attend with her to see what we can learn, to bring the connections of, uh, because it's rare that we have an assessment center that's community-based, that works with everybody. Many, a lot of the money from the federal government that built these are actually in partnership with probation departments. And so, we are unique in the fact that we don't do that and yet we are good collaborators and that, for me, what that means is sustainability. So, we're able to still have that, even if the county can't support that, um, for whatever reasons, we're able to hopefully still find that. And the freedom that they're able to offer to more than just youth, because they do everything, of course, from childcare, which is so desperately needed throughout our entire region, as well as assisting the elderly and everything in between. So, they get that freedom to do that under their mission and their, uh, their financial umbrella and the things that they look at, not just probation. So, we're gonna go show off there as well. So, that's next week. So, I left all of my luggage out. It's only coming and going. My pre-trials, I'm the pre-trial, um, that's my caseload is pre-trial, because pre-trial is all those folks that are waiting court. So, they get arrested and the judge says you can be released on a condition upon for this much, we'll reduce it, but you're gonna have to have some pre-trial monitoring. Those are all my cases. And because this is the season of entertainment, uh, people are coming up here overly entertaining and so my caseload is rising for that. So, truly, I'm just hanging on. I'm just hanging on.
Overly entertained. That's a good one.
What else do I have? I think that's it. So, I'm gonna share today. Um, I'm hoping that I have been invited after, because I spoke at this conference over the weekend. I'm gonna ask to come to Dallas in November, which I'm really honored, but I'm gonna see if I can bring some of my officers with me, so we don't have to pay for it. It's a nationwide. It's probably five to six hundred attendee conference. So, I'm hoping that I can get something out of it for our people as well. It's another drug, drug trends. But to see how then we do nationwide, not just statewide, that's gonna be exciting to see what we can learn. I'm sure as well as terrifying.
I love having Ignite in the community as a touch point. It's been a gentleman. He's in a wheelchair. He sits out and tries to raise enough funds to pay his rent. And so, I was able to stop yesterday, give him Tracy's contact information and, you know, just connection points. And it's just great having one entity where we can actually have that information available and share it with those that are truly in need.
Yeah, but if they can't do it, they're so, they're so connected, because we have so much. I've always felt that we are a resource-rich community. It's just connecting to that one person or that one this that can then fill that gap and that is a great hub to do that. So, anything I can do to help assist, I will do. Any questions? Thank you.
It was good. Thank you.
Next up, HR Director Mike Savoy. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Welcome to Wednesday.
It's very strange.
By the way.
Very strange.
Like it, like it.
Monday in my brain. This morning I woke up and said, go put the trash out. It's Wednesday. What are you talking about? Fly by if it's, it feels like a Monday, but it's actually Wednesday.
My dog, my dog lets me know that every Wednesday.
I've heard more people talking about meeting you today on Monday. It's just that everybody's off on this one, but I think it's gonna be great, so.
You will go into it.
Lot going on in my world right now. I'll just, uh, share the highlights with you right now. Um, we have a hundred and fifty-eight people on payroll. Uh, that includes seven seasonals. Um, we are recruiting for a number of positions right now. Detention deputy, they are getting very close to being full up in there. Uh, we're recruiting for custodian, um, an IT technician, of course, unfortunately for that one. Plaque clerk and a recreation planner right now. Uh, you may have noticed I did not mention nine-one-one dispatcher on that. We are, for the first time.
Better be not gonna.
We staffed on that one.
Plaque clerk.
You'll be getting an email on that one, uh, later today. We have a retirement coming up in there, so, um, but, so, a good news, bad news, uh, story there. Uh, payroll migration is moving forward nicely right now. Christina Johnston is diligently training with Gabby there, getting every opportunity they can to get together to go over all the different things with payroll. I also know that they met with some programmers online yesterday with Tyler Technology to talk about payroll codes and migrating from monthly to bi-weekly. And as I saw, or you should have seen in that email, I think I sent out last week or the week before, we are looking at September twenty-eighth as the go-live date for going from monthly to bi-weekly. We're very excited. We seem to be making good progress. Uh, Tyler, the folks at Tyler seem to think this will be, um, easier with their system once we make the move. So, uh, we're ironing out a number of details right now, but that is moving in the right direction right now.
The software will support.
Yes.
What we need it to.
Yes, it will. Absolutely. And there will be some things that will be, for instance, uh, you know, one of the things that it came up with us was, oh, my goodness, how are we gonna handle overtime for law enforcement? Because, as we know, law enforcement is on a four-week overtime schedule. We're gonna be doing a two-week payroll. Tyler Technology's payroll system has that built into it, uh, which means, and there's, I don't wanna bore you on the details or overload you on the details, how it works. But it will be something that not only will we be able to track, uh, but the folks over in the sheriff's office should be able to track their own as well and predict where they are with overtime a little bit better than they can right now, so. Other than that, I am working on compensation, uh, for next year, working with a, a number of different department heads and, of course, all of you on that. So, that's what's cooking in my world right now.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Any questions? Jeremy is not in the room. By the way, did you just read his email? That might be time sensitive.
I just sent that to him.
Up next, planning and zoning, Director Herrick.
Morning. Good morning. So, we're continuing to work on the comp plan, where we're working, um, waiting for the chairman to let us know when we should set that public hearing. There are a few changes that some of the other P and Z commissioners have identified that need to be, you know, cleared up, maybe some graphs and that type of stuff. We're extremely close to getting that out to the public. You know, as you know, as you're aware, we've looked at the two software programs. One of them, I believe, is really good for the building department, but doesn't have anything for P and Z. The other one has stuff for P and Z, but might not necessarily be what the building department's looking for. But I did schedule this morning and I haven't talked to Jeremy because he's been out another program and they're going to give us a demonstration next Tuesday. Um, and there are, hallelujah, um, some counties in Idaho that use it. So, I will be able to reach out to those peers and then see how it works for them.
Uh, one of the. I'm sure you and Annette are working on that together, so both of you are in agreement at the end of the day.
She's not here today. I don't know.
Next Tuesday. She's able to attend at the same time.
I, I hope so. Uh, she's not here today, so I shouldn't, I couldn't confirm that.
Well, let's just make sure that she's able to make that call, so.
Well, we will. We will, yeah. She'll get an invite and if she can't attend, then, um, they record them too. Lori won't be able to be there because Lori will be at the Northwest Community Development Institute all next week. This is her year three, I believe. So, she's getting close to completion. And.
It'll for, like a four-year deal?
Well, it, it has three years and then it has a graduate year if you choose to do that. At the end of it, you can also take an exam and to become a certified community developer. So, and I'm not sure if she's gonna do that, if she's going to do that, we should probably get her to the graduate year also.
That's awesome.
She's invested three years. It might be helpful to invest that fourth and.
We will get that planned out. Hannah's been working days on redaction, that public information request. She had gotten quite a bit done and saved it, came back the next day and we can't find it nowhere.
Mark.
She's doing some more.
Jeremy can't find it?
I don't, he hasn't been here.
He's back today, so.
Right. So, she just keeps, yeah, I mean, she started on something else and she'll ask him. So, she's working through that. I was out in the field a couple of days a week. The other days, he's writing letters and calling people. We're busy.
So, when you have, you say the chairman needs to set a date? Cherry or the P and Z chair?
The P and Z.
Okay.
Um, I'm trying to get, you know, but he hasn't told me whether or not he's gotten through it yet. And when, you know, we, I mean, does he wanna have the public hearing towards the end of August? And then we have to get all five people on a date that's available, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
I'm kinda waiting on that. Otherwise, everything's good. You know, the way the comp plan is going to meld into what you're doing, um, on impact areas, you know, we'll change what's in the comp plan, so we have to kind of blend those and come to a, a specific path. So, we'll see how that goes. And I'll be talking to you more later today about water quality issues.
Is it slowing down at all?
No.
I'm hearing it's a busier. I've heard that real estate has picked up. It's busy in real estate again too, so.
Yeah, I've been talking to some realtors and, yeah, it's really picking up. So, we'll see how, how it goes. Charter rentals aren't slowing down. Code compliance is busy. You know, we had an extremely full agenda this month. Next month isn't as busy. Only because someone didn't have their neighborhood meetings on three subdivisions. So, they have to have their neighborhood meeting before we accept that.
All right, thank you. Questions? I keep forgetting to ask if you guys have questions.
I would have spoke up if I had.
Okay, Parks and Rec, Director Binghamman.
Good morning and thank you.
Morning.
Yeah, busy is kind of the key word, I think. Recreation's been busy. I'm sure you guys saw the lineups the last couple of weekends on the highway and, uh, what we're seeing is basically increased traffic at all of our sites from Car Barton to Boulder to Fran, uh, actually Brush Creek has been really busy, the campground up there, so across the board, it's busy.
Are we charging a fee at Brush Creek?
We do. We charge ten dollars a night for the six sites that we have up there.
Nice.
Yeah.
So, we don't charge anything in Car Barton for those people to put in or not?
We do have a put-in fee. They can either do the annual pass or it's five dollars per car.
Per car?
Per car.
With no parking, we've got five dollars per car?
For, for launch. How about that?
I was gonna say, I've seen so many people on that river. Oh, my goodness.
It's, it's been very busy. Yeah, we went down to do some work, uh, Tuesday last week and it was busy enough that I just drove away.
Yeah.
We'll come back at three o'clock. Maybe that's a good time. Uh, anyways, I just wanna say, it's been a busy last two and a half weeks. Trying to get my feet underneath me. Got a lot of new things on my plate. Uh, I've been working with Doug and Danny on trying to get all of our budgets in line. Uh, we're gonna be presenting that to you guys and, um, Doug's been super helpful on helping me educate myself on some of the intricacies that I didn't know about. Uh, same with Danny. Danny has a great grasp of the snowmobile budget and so I've been super helpful. We are still working on details for the Sampson bids. Got kind of gunned up on a couple of details that are big number items and so before we put that out, we wanted to make sure that we had those things in, in line. I'm hoping that we get that done by middle of next week, so keep on putting that off, which I'm not happy about. Couple of the other things are, um, coming up is we have a parking ordinance and fee restructuring that we're working on for the winter parking lots. That'll come to you guys as a, uh, hearing later this summer. Hopefully, we get that done before October first. We're hoping to start selling some of our permits, longer-term permits, like the fifteenth of October, so.
Where do you sell those at?
That'll be sold through our office.
Through the office?
Yeah.
So, they can't buy them online?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're working that direction. The other thing that we're working really hard on right now is trying to figure out our new grooming route out at Warm Lake, um, between the Forest Service and where Perpetua is right now. We have a lot of work that we have to do to get that new route ready to go. I have been talking to the Disgranger and Cascade and they don't have the approvals that they need to allow us to start the work. So, I have emphasized that that's not something we can wait until September, October on. So, we'll see where that goes. We're gonna be also bringing back the vacation and validation for old council. Uh, I've talked to D L Evans and working with, uh, Arnie to figure out what we wanna do as far as moving that road to the north end of that parcel. Everybody seems very, uh, easy to work with. We may also ask for a piece of that ground for a parking lot, so we can get people off of West Mountain.
Great.
I don't know what the success on that'll be, but we'll see where it goes. Couple of other things we're working on right now is we've got IDL leases that have been hanging out there for two years. Uh, we still do not have our recreation leases going into this year. We did just get leases for United Payette and it, we have gone back and forth on that for a couple of years now and we are now back to the point where they want us to collect the monies for those leases as well and then they will reimburse the county. United Payette will reimburse the county, so it's kind of a flip-flop. And I think.
Anything we can do to help drive that? Is that the AG's office that has it stuck or where is it? What's the bottleneck?
So, I think right now the biggest bottleneck is they just got a new, uh, lease coordinator at the local office. He's taken over the workload that his predecessor had, trying to get his feet underneath him. He's got a big workload. Our leases are probably not going to come out until December, January, so that means we'll be grooming again this year without assigning lease. They are working with us on some other components to help us possibly with, uh, the expansion of Francie Wallace Parking Lot. That would be a special letter from the local office that would allow us to start doing that work this summer, so we can get that expansion going. That'll be a game changer for us, so, uh, just a couple of other things that we have coming up. As you know, care person that we, uh, we're looking at an amendment to the waterways ordinance. And so, trying to figure out what that's gonna look like. That'll also go to a public hearing that we need to have between now and next spring. Another validation for Stonebreaker Lane. Been trying to prove ownership on that and I think that we're close enough that we can have a validation hearing moving forward. So, that Parks and Rec, Idaho Department of Parks and Rec and Fish and Game can work out better access for ice equipment from that location.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so, other than that, we've got a new recreation board advisory, uh, candidates. The board will be in front of you guys next week and, um, we're still working on finalizing a couple edits on our strategic recreation plan and then we'll have that up for you guys to adopt as well.
I remember what the waterway ordinance changes are that.
We were talking about the powerboat use on tributaries.
Yes, thank you. Just wondering too if.
Oh, that's maybe we've been working on over there for some time and it's, that's something that needs to be done.
Agreed. We're gonna be talking about some water quality standards. I don't know if that needs to be identified in the waterways management plan either, but that might be a conversation with Sendo as we move through this, so. That in the back of your mind?
Yep, that's, that's in the back burner for right now. We'll get through a few other things and then start looking at that waterways. I've had several of citizens groups that have reached out to me and said that they would love to participate and help us as we start looking at that waterways management plan again, so we'll plenty of help.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then next up, wildfire mitigation, Director Kalovitchak.
Good morning. So, a couple of things that we finalize. I've been working with the firework group in Juan with the evacuation zone, so the whole county now is zoned out. So a couple of things that we finalized. I've been working with the firework group in Juan with the evacuation zone, so the whole county now is zoned out um, before a fire season, which is phenomenal. Kara will be getting that live, um, pretty soon, if, if it's not already on the website. Underneath emergency management and the hazardous, um, risk map is where they're gonna be located. Um, Juan is also working with Watch Duty, if you know that app, to be able to put those zones on that app. Um, it's highly used. I mean, I even use Watch Duty, so, uh, it would be tremendous if they were able to get those zones on that map for people to start looking at, seeing where they're located. So if something does happen, they're already informed prior.
So Mara, the zones that you guys did over here last year. Now we have zones around McCall and everywhere around the whole county?
The whole county.
Really?
The whole county is zoned out. Yep.
That's awesome.
Yep. So that is complete. Yep. And like I said, it'll be live coming soon. We just met with, uh, McKenzie as well. And Juan is gonna have her put, um, the ready, set, go definitions on the emergency management page as well as the sheriff's page and wildfire. Um, so she's linking them all together to have that same messaging. He's also been working with those adjoining counties to get that same messaging out as well. Um, so that's huge to have really the same information being presented to all local counties. Yes, you did get our survey out, so people down in Cascade, um, have already been answering that, um, evacuation zone survey. So we're already getting some responses and we should know and we'll, we'll have them come present that when they're done with all their findings this fall slash winter.
I was just looking, there was confusion on Facebook about that, cuz I was sharing that. And, uh, people said, it looks like you can only answer the survey if you actually were evacuated last time.
Yeah, the focus was mainly in Cascade to kind of see what information and I'll, I'll get with McKenzie and have her change that. And I'll talk to Ashley and see if she, they want it to be at their people as well, cuz they may wanna have a survey for individuals that aren't in just Cascade. But that was the initial intent was just to see really how the messaging got out last year. If they understood what the messaging was, cuz those are the biggest critical things, right, is do they know if they're supposed to be leaving or if they're not?
That was my question. There's, what's the best communication for that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll tie in with McKenzie again, cuz she just posted that yesterday.
Her does have it on there.
Perfect.
So how do they deal with the, I mean, we have seventy percent of empty homes up here. How do we deal with communicating with those folks?
So, and that's, that's why we're doing the surveys to see really if everyone that had second homes or were primary residents, how they got the messaging. Um, what, how they got their updates? Was it Watch Duty? Was it Code Red? Was it through the sheriff's office? So that's what's gonna help us out the most is pushing that messaging through whatever avenue that we find out we use the most. Um, obviously we'll still use all avenues, but that's the biggest question is the individuals that didn't live here, um, that have second homes is, did they feel informed? How do they want to be informed? How can we do better as a county, um, as emergency managers and the sheriff's office?
Well, yeah, I mean, if we have a fire, say up on King's Pines and, you know, two people are living in those homes up there and all the rest are empty, you know, you need to get ahold of those people and say, you know, this is what's going on and it's a hard thing to deal with, but they need to at least be notified, cuz they may not even be in the country.
That's why we keep pushing Code Red.
Code Red, yep.
It is their responsibility to sign up if they want alerted.
That's the biggest thing is they have to sign up.
Have to sign up.
That's the deal.
I think last year we had a lot of people register after the fires. Because we were pushing, Code Red's the way you're gonna get informed. Code Red though, has a specific area. So if you don't request, you know.
That area.
That area, you're not going to be identified. So you do have to be careful the way you sign up with that too, so.
So the zoning would give you that specific area that can.
Um, Firewise Grants are getting finalized. Not all of them, but about half of them have been finalized, so that's some of the stuff you guys signed this morning was for the Firewise Grants. Roughly to date, um, we have about fifty acres that have been completed and about twenty grand that's been reimbursed, so that's pretty phenomenal, cuz we still have thirty grand that we haven't done final inspections on. And typically my large grants, I do about a hundred acres for two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. So these Firewise Grants really encourage landowners to get out there, do their own work and spend their own money, which I think is amazing, so.
It is amazing. They're still working on SRS.
Yeah.
Our fingers crossed for that, but if not, we, we may have to have a conversation about how to fund some of these, cuz this does so much firework on the ground, but.
I did apply for two grants. Um, I haven't heard, I should know this fall if I got awarded those two grants, so the five-hundred thousand dollars. I call the East Mountain, so it's from Warm Lake all the way down to Clear Creek. And then I called the other one Tamrac. It's from Tamrac Falls all the way down to that ninety, so I can do work in those two areas. Um, all, like I said, I'll let you guys know if I get word, if I get awarded those.
Are they both five-hundred or one two-fifty?
One's two-fifty. Yep, two-forty over at Tamrac.
I think that's really the way that, you know, the state's gonna try and fund some of this work.
Yep.
There was a big acknowledgement from Fulter last night that Pilton SRS are at risk.
Yeah.
As we move forward, you know, they wanna send monies to the state, so. If the, if Pilton SRS aren't there, then the feds should be paying their fair share of property taxes, so we can collect those funds, so that might be something we all have to have a conversation with.
Yeah. Yeah, at least those grants are still available. Yeah. Those are some of the big things. I do have a meeting with myself and Neil and Humankind next week to talk about some Woody biomass um, options that the county may be interested in the future. Um, see what they can, um, help facilitate with getting some of this extra vegetation that we create off these projects out of them and maybe create some energy out of it, so.
So is he bringing us anything more than what he brought to us that first time?
Yes, it sounds like he'll have a, like a proposal, like an actual, like potential budget. So.
Our economic summit this year is based on infrastructure and I've asked to reserve a spot for wildfire mitigation and this Woody biomass.
Okay, nice.
Conversation with.
So I think a good person to reach out to is Tim Leishman with the Forest Service. Um, and I can talk to, um, see if he'd be interested, cuz he's the individual that's dedicated for the wildfire crisis or the wildfire risk area to look into Woody biomass and seeing how we can get some of that timber out, some using some of that biomass into energy. So he might be a good for presenting potentially.
Now you're talking. So when you say getting Woody biomass out, are you talking about the overstory actually do thinning?
Both. Yeah, so they're looking into being able to take like logging jobs and the slash that's left there, taking that material out. Um, whatever the large material that is not needed at the mill, potentially using that, grinding that down and using that as a biomass as well.
Actually bringing it out of the woods. Well, that's a big job.
He's, he's in charge of the Wood for Life program. Um, so he has a lot of different programs where he, he's actually helping find donations for the Chop for Cops here for the county, actually, to help them get some wood for their wood bank. So he helps facilitate a lot of that stuff where he's not able to sell that, that timber to the mills. He's using grant funding to help get that timber here so we can use it for heat. So we can give it out for free, basically.
Trying to figure out which one of the fires that I remember, but there was a conversation about the fact that they, they had huge piles that were sitting and those piles were catching on fire. And so, you know, it's, we gotta get those piles.
Yeah, and so the big landing piles, they have, um, they do have to get rid of those specifically. So when they do log, those piles tend to sit for at least one year, so it dries out enough, so then they go back and burn it. But that's the big discussion. Instead of truly burning all that stuff, can we pull that material out of the woods? Financially afford it and regenerate it into something. That's the big question. And I, I know that's been looked into for multiple years and there hasn't really, there's small answers figured out, right? But that biggest part is the mobilization of getting that material out of there, back to where we need it. And that's the hard part.
That's hard.
If you look at how much we are spending though to fight wire wildfire, if they would put some of that money up front and mitigate some of this, I mean, we would just wouldn't have the wildfire expenses, cuz, oh, my gosh.
There are those discussions, yes.
Yes. Billions and billions and billions of dollars on firefighting.
Yep. And then I have, I'll be seeing you guys again next week, cuz I have about five different contracts that will be getting signed next week.
Busy girl.
Well, Arnie was out too for a little bit, so they got backed up a little bit, so. Yeah, I have a site visit today for twenty-eight acres off of Elo Road. Um, and with that last contract being so low, I'm actually able to do about another twenty acres with that grant funding.
Nice.
Yeah, which is awesome.
So how far away are you from needing help?
Yesterday?
Just thought I'd ask the question.
We should resume a discussion on that this afternoon.
I was wondering if that was tonight.
She sent me her timesheet for the last quarter. I was like, ooh, yeah, busy girl.
Well, thanks, guys. Any questions?
No, I'm good.
Thank you for all you do. One last thing I meant to tell you guys, we will have a site visit here in October for the All Lands Partnership. And some of the sites that we're gonna go to is, um, King's Pine, uh, Little Ski Hill, some stuff up in Brundage. And then we're gonna go out potentially to Warren Wagon, where we're doing that stuff with Idaho Power, helping facilitate some of that large tree removal um, and widening the roads for fire access. And so I will be sending you guys an invite, so you guys are all more than welcome to attend, um, but we don't have an exact date of when that will be.
Was an update too on that grant that was just given.
So they got awarded it again, um, so, so it's twenty million dollars that they will be awarded. Um, they will sign the MOU in September, so there's still some negotiation with, um, where the money can be spent, how much, what the match requirements are, but it does sound like they will get that twenty million dollars. So this really discussions are starting to be having again of where they can facilitate some work on the grounds here in Valley County, Boise and Adams County.
Incredibly awesome. So are there meetings that we need to be attending as the county?
I've been attending all of them, um, as a representative for the county, but if you guys would like to start coming to some of the implementation or any of the other meetings, let me know. There are four subcommittees. Um, there's finance, there's communication, implementation and.
So. Do you attend the implementation, so you can let me know in somewhere?
Yep, I definitely can. Um, my goal here in Valley County is to make it where all of that stuff's gonna go through the lands committee um, for the fireworking group, just so that the same message, the right people are, are gonna be involved in discussing where implementation's happening. So instead of having two different collaboration groups, just kind of combine it into one in Valley County um, is what I'm proposing. I feel like that'll be easier.
Yeah, I've been working, we've been working on a big project up there on top of King's Pines, so we go up and down the road and see all their work.
Yes.
Saw it spread everywhere, all across the road, everywhere.
Yep. They clean it up every day, but yes, it's very hard when it's riding, which everything's hard when it's in subdivision, right? Um, that is just a very busy road, so. And then with the All Lands Partnership with the NFF, twenty million dollars, their, their main goal is to start doing some of that overstory removal. So if you guys know of some places, large landowners that are interested in getting some overstory removal, um, have them reach out to me. We can definitely start doing some site visits, so I can have some ideas of, um, where to start placing people.
Can we talk to El?
I have. Okay, great. Yes.
That is exciting news. That much money coming into this area is gonna make a big difference in our, our fire hazard risk.
Yep. Huge. Yep. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mara.
Rick Miller, if you will turn us off, the next, uh, presentation is not until ten-thirty. So we will hold until then.